Session, which would also tie into the next year's budget. So I just wanted to give an update on that.
Thank you. Any other communications? Alderman Kenny?
Madam Mayor, we received a communication from 24/7 Workout Anytime in Brookhaven Shopping Center. When they first put, when they first opened up business, they had signage that was allowed to go out onto Cass Avenue and along Plainfield Road. I should say 79th Street, forgive, or 75th Street, forgive me. They want to know if, well, we talked about it, they guess they'd gotten a notice or a violation for having their signs out longer than what was permitted. So we got to talk and I talked to Brian a little bit about it. Want to know what this council's opinion was of possibly having some kind of an amnesty day when the city of Darien for signage four times out of the year to allow businesses to kind of advertise something going on. It wouldn't be signage all, all the time, all the time because you get white noise and you wouldn't want to clutter up the streets. Maybe four times out of the year, maybe at Christmas, you know, September, once during the summer, something along those lines. Give the businesses some opportunity to advertise a couple, if they're having any kind of specials or something along those lines. Just so we can see we can help the business is out and not clutter up the, the streets up with signage. Because then that becomes white noise, but if you saw a new sign come up four times out of the year, that might benefit the business owners. And it was just, just a passing conversation. Didn't know if this council, obviously not at this meeting, but maybe down the future, we can come up with, think of something along those lines.
Dan, what is, what is the ordinance now for those kinds of signs?
Actually, based on anniversaries, we do allow for some special occasions. For example, if it's an anniversary, and one, one great example, I think is bone of beef recently. Bone of beef as far as, you know, they never came in for a permit. Next thing I know, they had a picture of a, I'll call it a balloon.
An inflatable.
Balloon of a beef sandwich.
Beef sandwich.
Correct. And it obviously it had helped business. Next thing I know, it's, you know, it's down, was up Saturday, might have even been up Friday. Was down Sunday and it's my understanding now that it's back up. So, you know, if it's up for a day, we really are sort, we're silent on it. At the same time, you know, if it becomes to be habitual, for example, if that sign for the bone of beef now is going to be up for a week, yeah, we'll knock on their doors and say that our ordinance basically allows a business to be, to have these temporary signs in place for a total of 60 days or two 30-day periods. I'm not sure if Alderman Kenny is referring to, you know, how many, obviously you said four times, something like four times a year.
A week, a week. So if you would do, say, Sunday, Sunday to Saturday, four times, four times a year.
Yeah, I'm not sure how we.
Alright, so the ordinance now is that they can have a temporary sign, but they have to get a permit to do it.
Correct, correct.
Okay, so bone of doing that without a, has done it without a permit?
Correct.
Okay, but we're still, we're still allowing them to do it as long as it is, is not for a long period of time?
Well, if it was only for a day, okay, here it is. And I mean, they should have called us, yes, as a courtesy. Obviously, if it's still up there this evening or tomorrow, we will be stopping there and, you know, letting them know what the ordinance is and see what the game plan is. So, yes, they will be required to have a permit, but if it's something for a day, you know, again, we're, we are silent on it.
Okay.
I know that's the, I'm not the athletic center, the sports fitness center up on, can't think of the name of it right now.
The Workout Anytime that he's referring to?
Workout Anytime, they've had their sign up on 75th Street. Up there for several days, if not a couple, you know, several weeks at this point. And it's on an A-frame. While we haven't aggressively pursued it, it's time for us to go back to them and knock on their doors. I mean, the sign becomes hideous after a while. If all these businesses were basically putting up these types of A-frames, you know, there'd be no control and again, as Alderman Kenny referred to it, as white noise. But yeah, if you'd like to look at, look at it further, take it back to a committee or.
So what you're saying is they can do it twice a year for 30 days?
Or one 60-day period total, or two periods of the consistent of 30 days each, yes.
You want to tackle that at your committee?
Yeah, we'll talk about it municipal services.
Yeah, we'll see if there's any interest in making any changes to the ordinance at all.
Because you might even get, you might even get less signage out if you're doing four times a year for the week as opposed to, you know, let a business at its own discretion do, you know, 30 days or 60 days as you refer to. So it might be a, it might be a win-win all the way around.
We'll let, we'll bring it to the attention of the, see what other towns are doing with it. Dan?
Yes, yes.
And have the municipal services committee look at it?
Yes, we will.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any other receiving of communications? Alderman Marques?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I receive a lot of questions, not just from residents, but from business people who are now looking at the Darien Point Center and the clock tower in the corner. And they think everything looks nice. Their only objection is with the electrical lines that still go above that. And the question always is, are you guys ever going to be able to take down those lines? And, and I've told them, we've had those discussions at our level and I told them what that would entail. Do we want to have a discussion at a goal setting sometime just to discuss the possibility, the cost and what that would mean?
Well, we already know the price tag. $1.8 million is what ComEd is telling us to bury those lines. So it would probably be appropriate for us to discuss at a goal setting because the goal setting is right before our budget process. So that would be, that would tie into the next budget.
We do that, Brian?
Sure. And Dan, the, the tentative plan that you had talked with ComEd about, that buries from where I think Jewel to Plainfield?
That's the extent of it, yes.
Both, well, are all the lines only on one side of the street?
Yes.
Okay, alright. Okay, so we'll leave that for goal setting.
Yeah, I think, I remember talking about that maybe three or four weeks ago. And when all the temporary lines were still up, it even was worse. Now that those are down, give everybody a chance to drive by again and see what that looks like, but certainly could add that to goal setting.
Yeah, it, it looks a little bit better now that the temporary things are down, lines are down, but it still is an eyesore.
Yes, it is.
Any other communications? Then let's move on to the mayor's report. And this is always the fun time for us to, to honor individuals. And it happens to be a Darien resident this year. And the Lions Club has taken on the, the practice of identifying a resident who, who brings a lot to the, the community. And I'd like to read this proclamation tonight. Whereas Mr. Chuck Thompson has been a Darien resident since 1964. And whereas Mr. Thompson is married to Susan Thompson and has two children. And whereas Mr. Thompson has spearheaded the holiday dinner drives at Our Lady of Mount Carmel Parish for the last 12 years. And whereas the holiday dinner drives include Thanksgiving, Christmas and Easter food assistance to needy individuals. And whereas Mr. Thompson has also spearheaded the Christmas toy drive at Our Lady of Mount Carmel for the last 12 years. And whereas Mr. Thompson's holiday dinner efforts over the past 12 years has included his work at engineering, refinancing and expanding the program so that engages the entire Our Lady of Mount Carmel Parish community. And whereas Mr. Thompson's holiday dinner efforts to serve residents of Darien and six surrounding communities has expanded its outreach to Joliet and to, to Southside Chicago communities. And whereas under Mr. Thompson's leadership, the Thanksgiving dinner drive supplies whole turkeys and fixings to more than 500 families. And whereas under Mr. Thompson's leadership, the Christmas dinner drive provides for over 300 families. Whereas, and whereas under Mr. Thompson's leadership, the Easter dinner drive provides for an additional 250 families. And whereas Mr. Thompson's organizational effort includes soliciting donations for food items, volunteers to sort and pack full meal parcels, and to mobilize a group of volunteers who work to deliver all food items. And whereas Mr. Thompson's efforts include pulpit solicitations, the recruitment and training of volunteers, running meetings and strategy, strategy sessions, establishing contact with recipient families and staging for each holiday dinner effort. And whereas Mr. Thompson's efforts in organizing the Christmas toy drive program includes a similar organizational effort as described for, as described for the holiday dinner drives. And his efforts serve over 1,000 children on a yearly basis. And whereas, as stated by Father Mike O'Keefe, pastor of Our Lady of Mount Carmel Parish, Mr. Chuck Thompson's vision and industry, not to mention his huge heart, helped to define us, Our Lady of Mount Carmel, as a caring parish community. Now therefore, I Kathleen Mosley Weaver, Mayor of the City of Darien, do hereby proclaim the 1st of June as Charles Thompson Day in the City of Darien and urge all residents to recognize the service Mr. Charles Thompson has given to the community. And Mr. Thompson, I'd like you to come forward to receive this. Congratulations. And now I have instructions, I have to come around and give this to you because we have to have some photographs.
Okay. Get to go on the wall of fame, Chuck. You know, Mayor, you mentioned about Mr. Thompson, whereas, whereas, whereas I've been very lucky because a lot of the guys that are standing up back there are the people who think this happened. I'm just, I'm telling people what to do and point and they do it.
Well, I'll tell you what, we're going to let you see it on the microphone, but first we have to move this stuff forward. Mrs. Mallers told me that we had to do an official picture and of course. So I think, I think you want to take a picture with her. Father Mike, you have a picture too? Yes.
This is my wife, Susan.
Susan, hi, nice to meet you. Sarah, nice to meet you. And I know this guy.
Who is it?
Yes. Okay, tell us what your camera will look at. Carol, where you look at her. Jerry? That's why Paul is taking a picture. Oh, one more, oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Why don't you go to the microphone and see if you can repeat what you just said?
Hey Father, we're good. Well, thank you very much. I first of all expressed my, my gratitude to the, to the Lions Club as well as the city council to recognize. And I, I do, I appreciate the recognition, but seriously, my efforts are, have really been part of a much larger ministry. The food and toys that we give to families through Mount Carmel have been going on for 45 years. So to look at my section of the help seems like, you know, kind of a small, a small part. But, but whether it's, it's food or toys or clothes or blood or life assistance, Our Lady of Mount Carmel is deeply seated in, in service. And I think Father Mike, Father Bob, Father Gavin have developed and fostered an environment where we really expect our parishioners to serve. And that's what we're supposed to do. I, this is a quote that I've been using for a while and said, service to others is the rent we pay here on earth. And I think at Mount Carmel, they ask us to pay it forward before we leave earth, so. But thank you very much, I appreciate the recognition and we're going to continue with the efforts.
Thank you, Chuck. I understand there's a cake and coffee over at the, the police commu, the center after this. Okay, so thank you very much Lions Club. Yes, Joe, you wanted to make some remarks?
Yeah, I wanted to make this, thank you, Madam, Madam Mayor. This is the second year that the Lions Club is honoring someone with the humanitarian of the year award. And we're very proud to be able to, to do this. And I wanted to thank the mayor and the city council and Mr. Vanna and the chief for the use of the police training facility. As this, as this award has developed and grown, it's nice to have the city as part of it and have the city honoring the individual that we selected. I think it brings more recognition to the award itself and to the individual. So many thanks to Madam Mayor, the city council, Mr. Vanna and the chief, and to the Lions who are here tonight who provided the cake and coffee. Just my way of saying thank you.
Thank you, yes. Thank you to all of you. Let's move on to the city clerk's report and we won't be offended if you decide to leave.
If you guys want to leave, go ahead.
You know, it's up to you.
Just save some of that cake and coffee.
Lou, you didn't want to leave, huh? Let's move to the city clerk's report.
I have one announcement, Madam Mayor. Meet and greet with the mayor will take place on Monday, June 15th at city hall, beginning at 6:00 PM in the upstairs conference room.
Let's move on to the city administrator's report.
I have no report, Mayor.
Okay. Let's move on to department head information and questions.
No report, Madam Mayor, more than happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions for the department heads? Let's move on to the treasurer's report, we have two warrants this evening.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. This evening I'm requesting approval of warrant number 141526 in the amount of $85,622.59 from the listed funds.
Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Marques, seconded by Alderman Shower. Discussion. The roll?
Marques?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Five ayes.
The warrant has been approved, next warrant?
Hey, warrant number 151603 in the amount of $377,109.81 from the listed funds as well as payroll for the period ended May 28th in the amount of $258,962.09 for a total to be approved of $636,071.90.
Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Belzak, seconded by Alderman Kenny. Discussion. The roll, please.
Belzak?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Five ayes.
And before the meeting, I asked that we take the standing committee reports, the item A under discussion there and move it to the end of the meeting so we get all of the items voted on this evening. But is there any other standing committee reports besides that? Alderman Marques?
Just wanted to note, Madam Mayor, that the April 27, 2015 municipal services minutes were approved and submitted to the clerk's office. And we're currently scheduled for our next meeting on June 22nd, 2015 at 6:30 here in the council chambers.
That's municipal services.
Municipal services.
Okay, Alderman Shower?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The minutes of the May 4th admin finance meeting have been submitted to the clerk's office. And our next admin finance meeting will be held on Monday, July 6th at 6:00 PM in our upstairs meeting room, pending agenda items.
Thank you. There's no police committee report?
Police, and the police committee meeting for June has been changed to July.
Okay.
Alderman MacGyver canceled that meeting.
Okay, for a lack of discussion issues, I'm sure. Alright, let's move on to old business, or questions and comments on any of the items on the, on our city council voting agenda this evening? Anyone here wanted to address any of those items? Let's move to old business and there being no old business, I'll move right to the consent agenda. We have a number of items on the consent agenda and in the past, I've read all of them. We've, we've learned that, that is not necessary to read all of those items that are on the consent agenda because they're posted unless anyone feels that any of these items I should read out tonight. Anyone, will anybody object to us just allowing this to be viewed by the audience on the, on our website? Alright, we have items A through J on our consent agenda this evening. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Kenny, seconded by Alderman Belkey. Discussion.
No discussion.
I'm sorry, no discussion. The roll, please.
Kenny?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Five ayes.
All items have been approved, let's move to new business. The first item under new business is consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an amendment to the city administrator's agreement between the city of Darien and Brian Vanna. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Shower? Seconded by Alderman Marques? Discussion. Alderman Belkey?
Okay, I wanted to talk a little bit about the background that isn't really showing under this link for the, for the agreement for Mr. Vanna. And I wanted to provide a little bit of history to Mr. Vanna. So what we're voting on here is the 1.75, which is the increase that the other members of the staff have received as presented. Also included is a merit of 1950, which the history shows that last year, Mr. Vanna didn't get a raise and didn't get a merit. So, you know, I think that it's reasonable to, at this time, make an adjustment accordingly on his salary. The merit itself, however, I feel is, is not something that I would like to, you know, kind of set a precedent to because it's something that he didn't receive in recent history, back in 2007. And prior to that, he did get a merit. The merit, the last time he got a merit was in 2013 and that was for $1,500. It has increased 30%, which is now at 1950. And Mr. Vanna does get a deferred compensation of 13%, which isn't presented or, or set in this, this amount. So the 13% that isn't shown here adds up to $19,520. So I guess in my mind, I'm thinking he has a separate agreement, you know, for the position that he's in. And he does get a base salary with some adjustments for increases as anybody else. But then he also gets this deferred compensation that the other employees don't get. So in my mind, I'm thinking he already gets his, his bonus per se and that the merit shouldn't be crossed over to his position since he has, you know, a whole different bundle of, of, you know, compensation. So I, I'm just thinking of it as a separate thing. And then also, it's 30% higher than it was before. So that can grow and I'm just trying to manage the, the compensation there. I think, you know, on average, Darien does pretty well. I don't think you're overly in the top, but you're not in the bottom. So we do want to keep competitive to the, to the whole package. So my point is, I just was a little, you know, iffy on that merit piece.
Any other discussion?
Madam Mayor, one comment on the, on the merit amount. That is what's gone up for all the employees in recent contract negotiations because the, the amount we pay towards our health insurance is also increasing. So again, that's what all the other employees have. So we were eventually going to increase to 20% of our salary. And that's why the merit was increased for all the employees the same amount.
If there's no further discussion, the roll, please.
Shower?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Belkey?
No.
Kenny?
Aye.
Four ayes, one nay and one absent.
The motion has been approved. The next item is a consideration of a motion to approve.
Mayor, I'm sorry, just one more point because I know, you know, obviously the public's watching and I, and I should have brought this up. But Alderman Belkey had mentioned the merit and I did not get one last year. Just so the public realizes, I didn't come forward with any increases last year. And it wasn't that the council discussed a merit for Brian Vanna and decided no. And I just wanted to make sure everybody understands that, it just was not brought forward last year at all.
Right, right. And he, he has not taken raises or merits for a couple of, a couple of years already, so.
That's all I had, Mary.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and I agree. I mean, it's definitely, you know, I have the history, it's definitely, you get some, some years and then, and you don't know.
And he hasn't chosen not to ask for that.
And he has chosen not to, and I think that's, that's good because we want to, you know, we don't want, we don't have a cap for your position. So it's nice to be responsible and kind of monitor that.
Just so the public understands, I think the merit evaluation went very well regardless of the money part. So I think that's important.
That is important.
Okay, thanks.
Alright, moving on to item B, it's a motion to approve an ordinance providing for the issuance of, and that's of not to, not to exceed 1,500,000 general obligation refunding bonds. Series 2015 of the city of Darien and providing for the levy and collection of direct annual tax sufficient for the payment of the principal and interest of said bonds, authorizing the sale of said bonds to Bernardi Securities and further providing for the execution of an escrow, escrow agreement in connection with such issuance. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Kenny, seconded by Alderman Shower? Discussion.
I guess I'll, I'll address this one and then we'll ask our bond advisors and our attorney here. This comes about from what we were discussing during the budget session. Earlier this year, the city was approached by Bernardi Securities about advanced refunding two of our bond issues. As we went through the budget process, we found that one of the bond issues, the payments just went through our three-year projection that we typically analyze in the bond. And we found that we had sufficient cash available. So we chose, rather than pay all the costs associated with that, we used our excess surplus cash for paying off those bonds early to save the 4% roughly interest that we had been paying on those, which saved the city probably in the range of $80,000 to $100,000. This bond, however, this is the series 2008, this has approximately 10 more years to run and is outside our three-year window that we're typically budgeting for. So this we have requested, we are interested in Bernardi Securities continuing to evaluate whether they can be refunded. We've given them a bogey of, we're, we're looking for savings of approximately $60,000 total over those 10 years. thousand dollars total over those ten years. What this memo does, what this ordinance does, is provides them the next six months to be able to achieve that sixty thousand dollar savings. We're not able to achieve that today, but it gives them that six-month window, so in the event they can achieve that sixty thousand dollar savings, gives us the ability to, for them to act on it immediately, interest rates being as volatile as they are. They previously presented tonight at our Finance Committee meeting that even as we get closer, some of the bonds are not callable until January. As we do get closer to that date, there are some costs associated with, if we were to refund them now, we would have some extra costs associated with it, so that's one of the reasons we're not able to get to the sixty thousand dollar savings at this point. As we get closer, we might be able to drop off a couple of those requirements, basically as far as escrowing, and be able to get closer to that sixty thousand. So this basically keeps our window open for the next six months where they can act, and when we can achieve that sixty thousand dollar savings, could, could act on it.
So we, in other words, we, we won't, we won't expect it tomorrow, but it could be, they could be bringing this forward to us at any time within the next six months.
Exactly.
But the, the ordinance allows the bonds to close during that period, so there'd be no more action of the Council.
Right, it gives them the window.
Yeah.
Okay, and did you want to, this is Mr., I forgot your name.
Kyle Harding from Chapman and Cutler.
Kyle Harding from Chapman Cutler.
Correct. And just to follow up on some of those comments, and Brian just made a good point, this is the corporate action that's necessary in order to issue the refunding bonds. If the, the interest rate environment is sufficient to allow for the sixty thousand dollars of net present value savings, which is the parameter that's included in this ordinance, then the designated officials of the city will be authorized to sign a bond purchase agreement with Bernardi Securities and have those bonds actually be sold. The, besides the sixty thousand dollars of net present value savings, the additional parameters in this ordinance are the one point five million dollars, that's a maximum par amount for the bond issue, as well as the maximum maturity of January one, two thousand twenty-four, so it's the, it's the same footprint of, as your existing two thousand eight bond, so you're not looking at extending that footprint at all. And the, that, what I just emphasized on that sixty thousand dollar number is that is a parameter, and it is net of cost, and it's a present value figure.
So that's the target? If we don't achieve that target, what happens?
Then we'll, if, if you're interested still in pursuing that refunding, we'd be coming back to the, to the City Council, as well as if we get to that November date and, and we haven't had a sale, we'll have to re-up this ordinance with some new parameters or the, or the same parameters and, and continue forward. In the past, we've had, I've been in front of this Council before with actual pricing, where we've had interest rates and, and tax levies, but we don't, we don't have that here. And, and as is typical in this interest rate environment that is so volatile, it, there are a lot of issuers that are moving forward with this parameter style so that you're able to better enter the market because interest rates can change on, on a daily basis. So you have Spear Financial as your financial advisor, as well as Bernardi Securities, your underwriter, evaluating market conditions, and if a sale is possible that results in these savings and these other parameters are met, then the designated officials will be authorized to sell the bonds.
So it's, this will only be achieved if the target of sixty thousand dollars is hit, or will it be the option of, of our, our investment people to, to take action on a lesser amount?
No, it would, either sixty thousand dollars is hit as a net present value parameter, or it comes back to the City Council.
Okay.
Part of the discussion was, at the Finance Committee prior to this, was the sixty thousand dollar number, and should that be adjusted or not? So if there's a chance to save fifty, but the committee, and the City Treasurer, myself, felt that we should stay at that sixty dollar, sixty thousand dollar savings value.
Okay.
That was what was anticipated, was originally presented to us, so we thought we would try at that level. And tonight, they actually brought out the possibility of saving some of the costs as we get closer to January first, because some of the bonds are not currently callable, so we'd have to set up an escrow, so there's some costs and everything associated with that. So they brought up the savings, we could actually get us closer to that sixty thousand as time goes on. Again, you never know with interest rates how they're going to move in the interim.
Okay, okay. Do we want Brenda Houston to address anything?
I don't think there's anything else to add personally, no.
Okay, I'll, I'll, stay here, Mr.?
I just wanted to, because I asked a question before with regards to the, just for the viewing audience, that the outstanding amount is one thousand, four hundred and sixty million, and the language says not to exceed a million five, so I just wanted to explain, you know, the difference of why it, why it's up, and, you know, I know it has to do with the, the proceeds to, to pay for the issuance and the interest, so if you could tap on that.
Right, it's, it's a requirement because you're, you're issuing debt at a lower borrowing cost, which results in the savings, so you actually have to borrow a little bit more in order to pay off that, that debt that is at a higher interest rate. So, so the, the real, the real thing to focus on, I mean, yes, the, the dollar amount is important, but without the net present value savings, which takes into account, obviously, how much your debt service on your new deal is compared to, to the, the old bonds, that's really the, the parameter to focus on. But it is because you're, you have to borrow a little bit more because you're, you have to pay off those bonds that are, that are at a higher interest rate. And as the Treasurer mentioned, as you get closer and closer to that call date, that will result in more and more savings because that negative arbitrage, that time from, if you did a borrowing now until your call date on January one, you have to set aside that money that's paying off at your higher interest rates for that five, six-month period. As you get closer and closer to that, you have to pay that higher interest rate for a shorter period of time. But again, not to be a broken record, but you're also taking interest rate risk, and that's just, this, this ordinance authorizes your professionals to continue to evaluate the market for, for a deal that's going to work with, with no less than sixty thousand dollars of present value savings.
That's within ninety days of the call date, correct?
Right, a current refunding is if we can get within ninety days of the, of the, of the call date, but these bonds are advance refundable, so that's, that's not a parameter. You can do a deal earlier than that, but as you get closer, again, there, there will be more savings.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you very much. Thank you. If there's no further questions, the roll, please.
Kenny.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Marques.
Aye.
Belkey.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Five ayes.
The motion has been approved. We saved one item for the, for the end because it was a discussion matter, and it was the discussion on Chuck's liquor license amending of hours, and I'm going to turn the discussion, leading the discussion over to Alderman Marques, whose committee has been addressing this issue.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Last Monday evening, the Municipal Services Committee discussed a request by Chuck Southern Comfort for a change in their liquor license hours. They're currently a, a Class D, and if you read your agenda item, you would note that the Class D liquor license allows liquor to be sold only during certain hours. Mr. Pine, Jim Pine, who's with us in the audience tonight, was part of that meeting, and we had an extensive discussion as to the parameters that they were looking at. The committee had a number of questions with regard to the number of patrons that might be served in the early morning hours, the extension to three a.m. versus the number of patrons who might be served by allowing a seven a.m. starting time. What we, what we found out is, and Jim, you could, if you could back me up, pick me up, or if you want to critique it, but basically, it's easier to say what you would have at seven o'clock in the morning versus what you'd have at three a.m. Because you, because you serve a full breakfast menu seven days a week.
Right.
And the committee looked at that, and, and the rationale is that if a family comes in for breakfast on a Sunday morning at seven a.m. and someone wants to get a mimosa or a Bloody Mary, they'd be able to do that. The, Alderman Belzak and I had, and, and Mayor Weaver was there that night, had significant concerns about a three a.m. closing and what that does in terms of putting people out in the street who might be out drinking at that time. Now, Mr. Pine also indicated that they would have a more limited menu, but they would have a menu at that time. And we were real concerned about the fact that there was a menu, you know, the fact that it, it's just, you know, that food is being served with alcohol, but we were concerned that you wouldn't be, have that many patrons who would be eating from a full menu at two, three o'clock in the morning.
Well, that's, Alderman Marques, that's a requirement of this.
Right.
Is to have a full menu.
Correct. So the way the discussion went, and Jim, again, backed me up or, or not, but basically said that you could live with the, with the deletion of the later hours.
Right.
Into three a.m. and, but you'd really prefer to have the early morning hours at seven a.m. And our committee discussed this to the extent that we thought it might be, even be profitable to create a new license and apply that new license to Chuck's, because we wanted to separate this, because, versus other eating establishments. And we were looking at a chart with other eating establishments, and I think you had it in your agenda memo, which showed times that other businesses start and when they serve food and when liquor is available. We felt that this was a unique situation and would demand a possibility of a new, of a new license, a new class license. So if you look at your agenda memo, you'll see the discussion the Municipal Services Committee held that night, and you'll also see some recommendations that were made, or being suggested to you as a Council. Now, we, we will get this back. We want an input from the Council in terms of how you felt about it, but we also want to be able to take that feedback, then go back and fashion something at Municipal Services that we would then be approved and have the agreement of the City Council. I don't know, Mr. Gombic, if you wanted to add any more to that.
No, that was, basically summarized it all. In addition to, a couple of questions came up. For example, what's driven here is also the gaming machines.
Yes, I'm sorry.
And what I want to make sure is that gaming machines, for example, Dottie's. Dottie's currently opens at seven a.m., but their liquor license doesn't start till eleven a.m. So the gaming machines run or coincide with the liquor license. So again, if Jim's has granted this variation later on for seven o'clock, the gaming machines also turn on at seven o'clock. So it's a little bit of a side note, want to make sure that's clarified. In addition to that, we'd be looking for Council discussion for creating a new license for Chuck's. Number two would be to amend the current Class D license from ten to nine, again, if the new license is created, or keep the number of ten Class D licenses, and again, creating a new license for Chuck's. And then C, want to make sure that we looked at the fee schedule, and a suggestion for the fees at this point was to increase it to twenty-five hundred for the new license. Class D is currently a two thousand dollar license. Thank you.
So we'd like some feedback from you so that we can go back to Municipal Services on the twenty-second, and we could discuss this and formulate something that we can all agree on.
Alderman Belkey?
I have a question with other Class D licenses, Q's being one of them, are they a D?
I think they're an I.
They are a different license.
They're a different license?
They are an I license, Q bar.
Because I was wondering how late they're, they stay open on?
Till two.
They, they have a one o'clock license?
Two on weekends?
Yeah, it's two, it's way in my, Saturday, Sunday.
So I, I was wondering if that, you know, if, if he was trying to keep the hours for competitive reasons, but.
Well, as, as Alderman Marques has said and Dan has said, that the discussion is to create a whole new license just for Chuck's.
For Chuck's.
Or allow all the Class D, or to change, amend the hours for, for the Class D license, which would mean all of those establishments that are under the Class D license would be able to do the same thing. And that was my concern, is that, that not happen, that we make a, a special license just for this business. Other businesses could apply for it, but it's the Liquor Commission's choice as to whether or not liquor licenses are issued. Alderman Shower?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just as my opinion, to start this off, I think it'd be a great idea if we would go to a brand-new license on this. In Chuck's situation, they have a full menu at seven in the morning, breakfast and so forth, whether it's mimosa or a Bloody Mary or something, if somebody wants to come in to have with their breakfast, or if it's a special occasion like a football game where there's going to be, you know, specials going on. With Chuck's, they have a restaurant that's going to be full service right off the bat. The other businesses, as you look at them, they probably don't open till later on or so forth, and I wouldn't even want to probably take the risk of even, you know, taking a look at having that situation and changing it out for the other nine or ten. I think a new liquor license would be perfect. I wouldn't go past and change the hours that we have now at nighttime, I don't think it's worth it. The question is, for the committee, is, you know, what would be a cost? It's, it's completely up with the, you know, the committee decides, but in this situation, yeah, I think Chuck's would have to, I think a brand-new license would be a good thing, because I don't think that anybody's getting, you know, I think it's helping Chuck's business because they're very, very unique having that breakfast.
Well, looking at the license, of the businesses under the Class D license right now, Dottie's would qualify.
Correct. Well, that's a good point, you know, and I just, I just, I think, the other thing, I think, is we should go back down to nine licenses and make a special one. If something comes into the City of Darien in the future, then we go back for a discussion to go back to a tenth license, so.
What if TGI Fridays decides they want to start, serve a breakfast menu, and they want to do the mimosas, and they want to do?
It's up to the.
It's up to them. What we said the other night at Municipal Services is we would address each request individually. We didn't want to blanket and say, okay, now all Class D's can do this. We wanted a special license. We, we were suggesting a special license, a new license for Chuck's, but if another business establishment who had a similar breakfast menu at that time of day came in and requested, we would hear that. So we're not saying no to it, we're just saying, we wanted to take each, a look at each one of them individually.
That was my concern from the start. We're, we're opening up, we could be opening up a can of worms, sir.
Yeah.
Alderman Belkey?
Right, so I guess to finish up some of my thought process here, I, I agree with the committee that, you know, certainly getting allowance for the morning makes a lot of sense, and I think you have a great breakfast, so that would enhance, you know, sales there, but the evening is, is where I'm hung up too.
Well, just, at the last.
For early hours in the morning.
At the last committee meeting, we pretty much agreed, due to concerns, that we would drop our request for any late night orders.
For three o'clock and stick with two.
Right. Yeah, there are more, Jim, Jim basically stated it would, it would be much more, much better for them to have the seven a.m. versus the late hours.
My concern, again, is, is, you know, establishing something like this, which could, could easily get out of hand, but in, in my case, as the Liquor Commissioner, if another business chose to step up and ask for the license that we create, the similar license that we create for Chuck's, what, what parameters do I have or, of denying?
Well, the City Council would have to create a, an additional license.
Yes, but I'm the one that brings it forward for approval.
So, and I think I, I know where the mayor's going with, if suppose a restaurant, like a, a chain restaurant, like, we'll, we'll go to Friday's, has, puts a, a breakfast menu together, okay, and Dottie's, and Dottie's, and, I'm, I'm sorry to say, I don't consider Dottie's a full restaurant like a Chuck's or a, or a Friday's. I believe that's not their business model. You know, what, what do you, what do you use as a criteria to define, you know, what, what do you consider a, a full restaurant at seven o'clock in the morning?
And that's, that's a concern, and what's a full menu? There is no definition of a full menu. What Dottie's may have for breakfast, maybe their full menu. Again, Chuck's is a little bit unique in what they offer. TGI Friday's, while they haven't brought anything forth, can they introduce a breakfast menu? I think, getting back to the mayor, the mayor's question specifically addresses, if Dottie's was to come in tomorrow for this new license, what authority and on what grounds can it be denied, if I'm correct?
That is correct.
Well, there would be, there would be a denial because there's no license available. If the City Council approved one.
That would be, that would be the, I could use that as.
Yeah, if the City Council approves one license and it goes to Chuck's, somebody else makes a request, the City Council doesn't create a second license in that category, there's none available for the, for the mayor, who is a Liquor Commissioner, to issue. So it wouldn't be, now, if the City Council created a second one, then you would have the authority to issue that.
Yeah, because, I'm sorry.
So, so it would reduce, basically what it does, your denial is based on the fact the fact that there's only one license available.
Is that, is that, would that be a legal foundation for me to do it?
It would be similar now if a new business came in town and there's not a license for them. It would be no different. Another restaurant came in, there's no license. They don't have the ability, you wouldn't have the ability to issue one unless the city council creates another license in that category. So, that's perfectly, yeah.
But I guess, if they, if they brought forward, okay, we've got, we've got the full menu, we've got this, we've got this, we've got this, why not give us, could they use that against the city for not, for not granting?
Well, no, the city has authority, really broad authority under the Liquor Control Commission. And because you've created a particular license and issued it to a business, does not in any way require you to do that again.
Okay, all right, that was, that's one of my concerns, is the, the legalities of, of denying a license.
Dan, what would be our procedure? We'll, we'll discuss this then on the 22nd.
Actually, from, so far, from what I understand, is we'll be putting this recommendation that was just mentioned back into an agenda format along with a ordinance. Again, there was a couple of items. One item left was the increase in the business license. I'm not sure if the city council wanted to address.
What's the current, what, what is the current?
$2,000 for the Class D. Staff had suggested 2,500.
I think it's appropriate that, that we do something like that. I, I don't know how the rest of the council feels.
Well, it's a, it becomes a unique license, and you're expanding their hours and giving them an opportunity for additional revenue. So, I don't think there's, should be any objection with $500 more.
Have we heard from all the Aldermen? With, with what has been established so far, the, it's going to be, the 3:00 is out. A new license is going to be created.
7:00.
With 7:00 a.m.? And how does that work on, for the, for the gaming? Do they have to go and reapply to the, the Illinois Board Gaming Board?
It's my understanding that.
Or does it automatically happen?
It automatically happens once they submit the new license or the city submits them. They'll submit, the city will submit the new license to the appropriate channels for the state, and then I'm not sure if the, if the owner, meaning Chuck's, then submits that separate to the gaming board, in which case, all of this is controlled through some type of database for the machines to be turned on and off. So, Chuck's doesn't turn the machines on and off physically?
No, remotely.
Alderman Shower.
And, and the other thing to add into it is, the 10 D licenses, I would recommend to go down to nine, and then this other one be created just saying for one. And that way, if anybody ever came back, we'd have to go through the city council and Liquor Commissioner again.
How does, how do, how does that happen? Can it be all done in one ordinance?
Yeah, it would be an ordinance.
Reducing the D licenses?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
So, just as a recap, Madam Mayor, from a, creating a new license, we're not sure what it's going to be classified, whether it's M, or whatever the case is. Amend the Class D's from 10 to 9, and then establish a annual fee in the amount of 2,500 for city council consideration.
And it's going to, it's also going to have the hours of operation?
Yes, yes.
And also, to specify a complete menu, menu for, as part of the service?
It'll be a full, full-service menu for that establishment.
Okay, okay.
Given that, does it make sense to come back to the council in two weeks, then? I don't know the, the committee, I mean, as long as the direction's clear, Dan could work on the ordinance and bring it right back to the council.
Yeah, because actually, the next municipal, the next Municipal Services is not till the 22nd, and our next council meeting, I believe, is, what, the?
Two weeks from today, so 15th.
So, it's okay with you if we go directly to the city council?
I have no problem with that.
I have no problem either.
Jim. Okay.
All right.
Thank you, thank you, everyone. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
You, too.
Okay. So, that is, that's the end of our voting agenda and discussion. We have one more item open on the, on the city council agenda called Questions, Comments, and Announcements of a general nature. Do any of the Aldermen have any general announcements to make? Well, if anyone wants to address the council from the, from the audience. You've been very patient back there, but did you realize that all your issues have already been voted on? Yeah, okay, all right. Both, both you and the gentleman behind, all of your items have been approved? Okay, okay. I didn't know if you were aware. You were still sitting here, so I thought maybe you didn't know. Okay. It's, would you say that again? It's fun to watch?
It's more fun to be on here.
I'm telling you, I haven't heard that one before, so, thank you very much. All right, if, with that said, do I have a motion to adjourn? Alderman Belkey, seconded by Alderman Marquise. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I've never heard that before.
Fun to watch.
Fun to watch.
Turning the mics off.